My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're pleased you're all here this evening. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Holland Baugh.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zamfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on May 6, 2019 were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Moving on, is there a motion to approve? So moved?
Tucked in.
Moved in, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes. Distributed to you prior to the meeting were two things. The municipal, the city's municipal court report, annual report, and then also the financial budget summary report for the month of April. And then I also have a listing of board and commission appointments and reappointments that I'd like to read on, that the mayor has requested confirmation of. Two, the Bicycle Safety Commission is Kirby Buck's for one year, ending 5/31/20. Bicycle Safety Commission, Andrew McDermott for three years. And Parks and Recreation Board, Phil Simmons for five years. The Traffic Commission, Eric Klotz for four years. The Tree Commission, Phil Holland Baugh for three-year term. Zoning Appeals, Nathan Eberle for a three-year term. And these are reappointments. Bicycle Safety is Kristin Ottley for a three-year term, Reagan Ottley for a one-year term, and Madison Stumpf for one year. Human Relations, Ellie Boyle, Morgan Hollinsworth, both for one year, and Major Justin White for a three-year term. Income Tax Board is Joan Callicod for a two-year term, and Galen Finn for one year. And Parks and Recreation, Monique Rosati for a five-years term. And Planning Commission, Erica Sleek for a six-year term. And Public Utilities, Matt Paquette, for a five-year term. And we need a motion to approve those as presented.
Thank you, Kay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved in, seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I wanted to mention that a very stellar group of people. The mayor should be commended for his work in filling these slots with such fine selections. And know that we certainly appreciate all the work the boards and commissions put into serving the citizens, and we appreciate it.
Agreed. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The board and commission appointments and reappointments are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Kay. Mr. Mayor, I'm unaware that we have any lobby or any special recognition this evening, correct? Very good. Thank you. So let's proceed to lobby visitation, please. Kay, has anyone signed up to speak to council this evening?
No lobby visitations.
Very good. Thanks. Moving on to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance levying a $5 motor vehicle license taxed as authorized by Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Roland.
From Parks and Recreation, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the purposes of acquiring financial assistance for the Nature's Works Program.
Sandy. I have two pieces of legislation. First, a resolution for the committee whole, a resolution honoring Daniel Gordon, member of the city, member of the council of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Excuse me for that. And also an ordinance from the Utilities Department, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts to replace the ATAD tank covers at the water pollution control facility.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zamfordino.
From the Transportation and Safety Committee, I have a resolution which Kay is going to show us how to read in a few minutes. This is a resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration. As authorized under federal transit laws, as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program. Executing a contract for the fiscal year 2020 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and 5339 and/or 5311, funding for capital and/or operating assistance, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon a grant, proposal, and/or application approval.
Thank you, John. Well done. Moving on to our official reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council, and all assembled. Just have a couple of things to report on tonight. First, I want to thank you very much for, Bill, for your comments there about the appointments. This is something, as you well know, we take very, very seriously. And it's always wonderful to have a listing of names. Some people volunteer, others are recommended. Some come from you, some come from other bodies and so forth, but I know that you share with me a special sense of gratitude for the fact that so many of our fellow citizens are willing to take on these assignments, not for the pay, not for the pats in the back. They go, they see it all. And a lot that we're all very familiar with as well. But we try to move as quickly as we possibly can and to maintain a well of good, of names. And I'm really grateful in keeping with our city charter how that this all works. And we've, I don't know where we would be without all these citizens stepping forward and helping us out in so many, many different ways. Needless to say, I think this last weekend, when we got through, maybe to, maybe some last night, we were breathing a sigh of relief. It goes without saying that we had a lot of activities going on in the city. I was particularly concerned, not so much about my past with the university, but more my present, because of, we had three commencements going, and even Nadine and I went out on Friday night. I was so worried about it. And she said, "Well, let's, we gotta go out." So we checked all the parking lots and the shuttle system going back and forth, and it was all very reassuring. And because we all know, painfully so, that we've got so much going on here in town with road repair and moving people from one side to the other or coming off of I-75. I think it was, it caused us all a really, a sense of anxiety there, wondering how it all worked out. So I was really relieved this morning when I had a good visit with President Rogers at the State Fire School, and he volunteered. I didn't have to, you know, probe, I said, "How?" He started to say, "Well, things really worked out okay." And I said, "Oh, I can't begin to tell you how much relieved I am to hear about that," because I thought I was going to hear just the opposite. And he said, "No." He said, "That alternate system, and I know our city police working with the university police, and, I mean, there, lots of folks have been involved in this, and it all came together." And so it worked out, as near as I can tell, beautifully. And as he said, "Maybe we should keep this system, and even when we get the roundabouts and all the fix," because it seemed to work out well in terms of the ingress and ingress and so forth from the Stroh Center. So that was very good. And of course, it started first on Friday night with the Firefly Night right over here in the library. And again, I'm so grateful to Chief Hetrick and Deputy, or Deputy Chief as well, White. Justin was in the lead, and Tony was bringing up the rear, but we had close to, what, 300 or 270? Wow, I can use Merwell, you know, words, just rounded off a little bit there. 300, okay. But it all worked out, and the neat thing about it, and I don't know if you had a chance to see any of it all, but there are so many families that were out there and doing it. And we had a reasonably, you know, a good weather night compared to last year. We had more police on hand to help us out. We only had four last year. Tony doubled it this time around. So we got through that all right. And, but needless to say, and really, on Firefly Night, I'd be terribly remiss if I didn't mention Katie Thompson and her highly energetic group of Planning Committee and so many volunteers. And there was Katie up there leading exercises there before they even got started going out there and that. And that was pretty clever. It was well done. And so I know you join with me in looking forward to the next Firefly Night coming down here in June. So that should be great fun. But all in all, I think we lucked out over the weekend. I know that all of our nerve endings are wearing a bit thin with comments from the public about the road repairs or the lack thereof, or I totally agree with President Osbacher, they're doing a lousy cold patch job there in many instances, and we've been trying to monitor that. And, but it is, it's a complex process, and I just have a feeling, like Mike does, that they could do a heck of a lot better job on that. But we all know that they're putting this down, that they're going to be tearing it up, and it's a real process there. So all we can do is keep telling people to hang on. It's, we've said all along, this, these days would be long, and it would be coming, and so we've, we just have to continue to hope for the best. But we are doing, you know, basically on track, and you can hear from Lori and Brian Kraft will not be with us tonight, but I know that Lori might be able to comment if you have any more specific questions about that. The, and President Osbacher and I had a really good situation on Saturday morning because we helped to reignite the high school hockey in the city of Bowling Green. They had their 27th Annual Bobcat Hockey Golf Outing, but we did not have high school hockey this last year. We've won six state titles in the past, and it was a good weather day and of fun and to see all this amount of energy. And I'm so grateful to the schools for, especially Superintendent Scroochy and his athletic director there, Bart Connor, for reigniting the program there. So that was always very good. The State Fire School this morning is, again, I've been doing this now every year, joining with our, all the representatives from our own fire division, and this morning with Chief Mormon, who's did an excellent job speaking to the school, but there are some 400 participants, there are firefighters and emergency personnel from all over the state of Ohio. This is the 45th year. I said I felt a little bit ancient this morning because I remember very well when we started the whole school at the university. And some of the, some of those people are still around, like Joyce Kepke, played a major role in that whole program, getting it started way back in the 1970s there, 1974. So the only other thing, and I'm especially grateful to Dr. Ann Light, she's retiring. She's been heading up the fire school, and I know that Bill, Chief Mormon, would be very grateful too for her leadership over all the many years since she's been there. She grew up in Bowling Green, and she's been really outstanding, and I know she's married to a firefighter in Cincinnati. So that seemed to go very well. But I was particularly grateful to join with President Rogers this morning and hearing from him that very positive report about the weekend. Please keep in mind the annual Memorial Day Parade. We're going to do it. We may have a few little minor bumps along the way, but we'll be all headed and pointed toward going to Oak Grove Cemetery by stopping there at the courthouse. It's all beginning at 10 o'clock, and all we can do is hope for good weather. And not only for this community celebration, but as Kristin Ottley will be quick to remind us, she's hoping for a very good weather day to open the city pool and water park. So let's hope that all comes together. That's maybe excessive optimism on my part, given the kind of weather conditions we've been putting up with lately. But I, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to answer them. And, but thanks again for your support and the committee, appointments to committees, commissions, and boards. So that's, that's really good, so.
Other questions for Mayor Ed?
I just have one question.
Yes. You're not going to talk negatively about one appointment there, are you?
No, but I did get a text message from my mother. And, "Is there a Tree Commission meeting tomorrow at 4:00?"
As a matter of fact, there is.
And is my father expected to attend?
No.
No.
But it would be wonderful to have him there because his appointment becomes official on June 1st.
Okay. I will let him know.
But tomorrow, I mean, this is a pretty significant thing because we have a representative coming in from, it's going to be a special meeting of the Tree Commission because of the awards we received, and a person is coming in from the state to meet with the Tree Commission about the kind of programs we have and so forth.
Okay. I will tell him he's not obligated to be there, but he's more than welcome.
He would be more than welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. And his garden is really looking darn good.
Well, Mom just wants him out of the house.
Well, I can tell he's already putting a lot of time over at Simpson Garden Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tredder.
Mr. Kraft was unable to join with us this evening, and so it falls upon me to give you the construction update. Our utility contractor working in the downtown, if you were in the downtown today, you've noticed that that work has moved back to the south end of the construction zone, and they are beginning their final push north. So they're down at Ordway now, and the construction will move back north. Various work, including connecting every building along that way to the new sewer line, along with a gravity sewer line, has to occur in this last phase. So it's anticipated that the South Main portion will last into June, with similar closures then planned on North Main and Worcester after. The specifics of the plan may be modified depending on the progress of the contractor. Following that, then the road contractor will be mobilizing in the downtown. My understanding is he's planning to start on the west side of the street at that point. It's going to be a long summer, and as always, we just encourage folks, be patient. The downtown is still open. The parking lots are open. We purposefully delayed any work in the parking lots this summer since we knew on-street parking would be impacted, so the parking lots are open. These are, a lot of them are small businesses. They really depend on us, and I think it's time, you know, I just really encourage us as a town to support them as much as we can. Also, as announced by ODOT, the bridge over I-75 is currently closed and will remain closed for 60 days. Again, we also have a lot of businesses out on Worcester Street. It's actually kind of easy when you get out there to get around out there right now without the other traffic. So, so you can quickly go and do your shopping, grab a bite to eat, whatever it is that you'd like to do. We do, here in Bowling Green, try to support one another, and I would encourage us to continue to do so, even during these difficult times. Better days are ahead, it's just there are little ways ahead. And that completes my report.
Questions for Lori?
Okay. I am Heather and Brian tonight, so if you have any questions for them, please let me know. All right, then I'll scape. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. So Ms. Saylor is not available this evening or is not with us. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening. I have a couple of concerns about a couple reappointments to the Bicycle Safety Commission. Just kidding, I'm just kidding. And it, Mark, let your dad know that it's the Tree Commission, not the Hosta Commission, okay? We want that focus still at Simpson, so.
Well, that's another story.
Yes, another story. Saw him out there today. Just a couple of things. The mayor stole my joke, but I'm going to share it anyway. The pool does open on Saturday, as I'm standing here with my fleece on. So weather-dependent, of course, but I think on opening day, we're going to open pretty much regardless. So it's a great opportunity to get some of our new employees out there and literally get their feet wet, so. But yeah, hopefully this weather will be gone and we'll have a very, very hot summer.
It is a heated pool, right?
It is, yes. Thank you, Sandy. Yes, absolutely. But it'll be fun regardless, and kids will be excited for sure. The only other thing that I have is we have some brand-new trail maps of Winter Garden, St. John's Nature Preserve, so I'll pass those out. Those turned out really well, so shout out to our staff for getting that done. It's time to, we needed more, so it's time to update it. And then, of course, I like the etiquette section on the back, and just will remind people there were some changes to that, including the no smoking and vaping on any park property. So as the weather gets warmer someday, I hear it's coming, will really be our first challenge with that in terms of educating people that that is a change from last year's nice weather. So citizens are more than free to say something. Everyone that we've encountered and said something to has really been compliant and understanding to that. They just, if they don't know, then we need to let them know. So, but any issues, staff are around, or worst case, law enforcement is always there to support us as well. So, but that is a change that obviously wasn't much of an issue in January, February, and March for the parks. So, any questions?
Questions for Kristen.
A comment. Your daughter is incredible on that sidewalk, or on the Bicycle Safety Commission.
Thank you. I'll let her know.
Far.
Great. She was almost here tonight. She was really bored at home, but I couldn't talk her into it, too.
Thank you. For the attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
I just wanted to let you know that next week I'll be going to Columbus, the Ohio Municipal Electric Association, we call it the OMEA, which is sort of part of our AMP membership. That's their legislative wing. We'll be, we'll be in Columbus next week to meet with our state legislators. It's on the 29th we're going down, really to talk about issues that affect public power, but municipalities in general, you know, things that the state can do to impact us. And so a couple of things that we'll be talking about with our representatives and senator. The proposed Clean Air Bill that is being targeted towards the nuclear plants, Davis-Bessie and Perry, they're really trying to write municipal generating facilities out of that bill. Also, there's some proposed legislation about water rates and what we charge for outside, this outside wholesale customers. If our rates are different than inside rates, this is the third try at that now. Not really sure what the legs of this are to get passed, but it's come back up again. And then, you know, another thing that always comes up is the kilowatt-hour tax, that's always under a targeted impact or a targeted change of some shape or form from the state. So those are the, some of the highlights that we'll probably be trying to talk to our, you know, representative and our senator about next week. If you have other issues or questions about that, I'd be happy to take them now or talk to you later in the week about it. That's my report.
Questions for Brian? Very good. Thank you. We appreciate your efforts down in Columbus. Those are all very important issues.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Yes, Mr. President.
Here, Robinette.
I think, as you're all aware, we had a public hearing tonight on ordinance 8769. There was no comments from the public. We received a report, had very limited discussion. And of course, that will move forward to its third reading tonight. In addition, on May 10th, President Osbacher, Planning Director Saylor, Planning Commission chairperson Jeff Betts and I met to discuss the various planning and zoning initiatives that are in progress or anticipated in the next six to 12 months. This meeting was held in response to questions asked by Jeff Betts about how the Planning Commission would be involved in the planning and zoning initiative generated by the CAP and the East Worcester Street Strategy for Redevelopment. So this is really just a detailed discussion in lieu of a cumbersome email answer. But in addition to laying out city council's current and future plans for implementing CAP and the East Worcester Street redevelopment recommendation, and the anticipated role of the Planning Commission, we reviewed the Community Action Plan, or the CAP, a little bit. And we discussed some specific findings in the CAP. The CAP states that successful implementation of CAP initiatives is dependent on strong commitments from and close collaboration among all partners, the city coordinating these efforts. Other stakeholders, such as BGSU, property owners, developers, other units of government, and nearby residents, have their own set of interests and goals for community improvement that often align with the CAP. CAP outlines a sequence of action and responsibilities to realize its goals. Now, recognizing that implementation should be guided by the city, but not to be the sole responsibility of city staff, the CAP outlines available grants, tools, and approaches for implementation that can be undertaken by a wide variety of partners. The CAP also recommends the creation and strengthening of new entities to help drive the vision of the neighborhood forward. Implementation of the plan will only be successful through continued community engagement and collaboration between local partners and neighborhood stakeholders. So, directly from the CAP document. The city government is only one part of the solution to implementing the CAP recommendation. In the seven enumerated CAP priorities, lead partners are identified for each of each listed initiative, either the city, private, neighborhood, or BGSU, and/or combinations of the four. In total, neighborhood stakeholders are listed as the lead or co-lead for 23 different initiatives. A few examples of initiatives for which neighborhood stakeholders are listed as the lead or co-lead include facilitating the establishment of a community development corporation, listed under priority two, establishment of a rehabbers' network program through a potential collaboration with BGSU and Habitat for Humanity, that's listed under priority three, and development or to develop a comprehensive and targeted marketing strategy to attract allied stakeholder groups that will play critical roles in realizing the vision for the district, and that's under priority six. I just picked three that jumped out at me as being particularly relevant to recent discussion, or 23. There are 20 others than those. So our discussion on May 10th reminded us, the group that was gathered, that for the CAP to be successful, efforts by more than just the city are required. Private and neighborhood stakeholder action is both necessary and essential. The CAP identified projects exclusively focused on by the city, focused on the city's east side and neighborhoods surrounding downtown Bowling Green. So last year, city council identified 10 priorities to implement, and to date, three of those priorities have been fully implemented. The implementation of one priority has started and is still in progress. One priority's been closed, is answered, but without action, as BGSU is the lead. Four priorities are related to the zoning code and will be addressed by the contractor to be hired to revise the zoning code, an ongoing effort. And the implementation of one priority is pending action by the city administrator, and one further priority is pending action by city council, specifically the issue we talked about tonight. Additionally, we will soon move forward on implementation of the recommendation from the East Worcester Street Strategy for Redevelopment, and many of which require changes to our zoning. Of course, that discussion will start on June 3rd. So a very large number of the CAP initiatives will not even begin without eastside neighborhood stakeholder efforts, but these have been, you know, slow to start. So the group, we specifically asked Mark and John, who are both, to meet with your eastside constituents in the first and second ward, and determine which of these neighborhood stakeholder-led initiatives, as defined by the CAP, are important to them as a group or groups, and determine how they will move forward with implementation and what help or the resources they might need to do that. That was end result of that discussion we had before of it. Further comment? You were there as well, so subject to your comments, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. I would just comment, first of all, Greg, that I do appreciate you continually monitoring progress as it relates to CAP initiatives. Significant amount of time was spent, and a significant amount of money was spent on the consultants, and a lot of public participation and input went into that. And I do think that that's one of those documents, among others, that is providing the roadmap that we're depending on to move our community forward. So I do think that, you know, continued reference back to the CAP and monitoring progress, and as you've done tonight, you know, raising awareness of initiatives or goals that have yet to be considered, and also identifying the fact that or goals that have yet to be considered, and also identifying the, the fact that, you know, this is a community action plan. So, you know, even though there are items that the city is taking the lead on, we are dependent on, you know, community groups and residents to contribute in a meaningful way towards satisfying some of these initiatives. So, I think it was a, a, a good discussion that we had, and I appreciate your comments this evening, because I think it's good for us to publicly say these things in order to remind everyone in our community that, that has interest in community improvement and, and all of these things, that, you know, we're in this together. So, I do appreciate your comments and hope that they'll be taken in the positive light that they're intended, and that we can have some, you know, positive action in, you know, in the, in the not-too-distant future, I guess. Thank you.
And, just occurred to me too now, Mr. President, I think sometime this summer, although I would like to get the first meeting of the tree project behind me, but I would be willing to initiate a relook or a assessment of the remaining CAP, city-led CAP priorities, and see if we can come up with a new list, a shorter list perhaps, four or five, that we can all agree on, the same way we agreed to the first ten, and maybe find another way to move forward on, on recommended city projects. I think sometime this summer, happy to.
I would just like to add that I, the meeting that we had earlier tonight about '94, I don't think remotely comes close to addressing the issues that are lying, outlaid in, in number 10 on that CAP priority list. I, I agree, it was a good conversation, I agree they're positive changes, but to, to cross off 10 after we pass that, I think would be a great disservice.
That was never the intent, Mark.
Okay.
I just, as I preface my remarks, I fully expected that that was going to be an ongoing discussion.
Right.
We're just taking it piecemeal at a time, trying to identify things that we have, available to us right now to address issues and complaints that consistently come from the neighborhoods, so.
Right. I just wanted to make it clear that I don't feel it addresses the issue. I have, on that note, we, we had our last plastic bag meeting on, on May 6th for the subcommittee, and we have communicated with Mike Marsh, and he has made suggestions, and we have put together our official recommendation from the committee to council as a whole. And I'll pass out a paper copy of that for people that like paper copies, and then I'll try to send a digital copy to everybody within the next couple of days for people that prefer digital copies. This is just for people to look over before we have a public meeting on the topic at some point.
Thank you, Mark. In terms of process of this, you had mentioned that Mr. Marsh had reviewed, I believe that one important next step is to ask the administration to review it for input. Once we have an idea of reactions, recommendations, after reading this draft, we can begin looking at a calendar and coming up with a community of, I'm sorry, yeah, committee of the whole meeting, which I think is appropriate in this manner, as we move forward towards potential introduction of legislation. Thank you for the committee work, we appreciate it.
It was our pleasure.
Quick question there. So, Mark, this has not been reviewed by the administration?
It has been. That's not necessarily why, by the city attorney.
Oh, good.
City attorney, not the city administration, right?
Right. Right. Just for the, you know, legalese on things.
Mr. President, I would request consideration that when it does come before council committee as a whole, that we allocate more of an open-ended amount of time to cover it, because I think that it would be beneficial to have some sort of time for public input. The concern I have is that there may end up being some changes to what we've got as our recommendation, and to discuss that without giving the public a chance to, to give input, I think would shortchange us in getting information to help us make our decision. What I've noticed, and not major observation, we've all noticed it, is when we cover a policy or some sort of a, a change, and we have public hearings, but until we have a specific proposal, the, the comments by the public tend to be more general, which makes sense. Should we have plastic bags, should we not, should there be exceptions, et cetera? And then what happens is, whatever committees got the assignment, takes that public input, puts together a proposal, and then the public comment shifts from the more general to discussion about the specific proposal. And that's many times when we have those three separate readings and people have a chance to see the proposal. If we go straight from the recommendation of the Community Improvement Committee to council committee as a whole, where there hasn't been the intervening time period where the public has had a chance to see the more final form recommendation of the Community Improvement Committee, then we're shortchanging ourselves in getting that public input that is directed toward the specific proposal. And so, if, for example, there happened to be a provision that the council committee, committee as a whole wishes to change, but we haven't heard from the public, when we make that decision on what to introduce, then I, I think we're shortchanging everybody, the public from a chance to speak before the council committee as a whole makes a decision, and then, of course, are gaining the information that would benefit us in making our decision. So, I guess what I'm saying is, it would be nice if this proposal that was recommended after quite a bit of work by the committee would get out to the community, we would then have opportunity for the community to, to address that specific proposal and give us the benefit of their observations. If we go our normal route with things that don't change much, where we just have a committee as a whole, and we don't have public input, and we try and do it on a night where the council, so we're trying to do it in 45 minutes to 50 minutes, I don't think that works as well here. So, my, my recommendation and suggestion is that we have some way to incorporate public comment.
Understood. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other additional committee, council committee reports this evening? Very good. Okay, would you please lead us through the reading of legislation, please?
Legislation for first reading, resolution number 3730 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of acquiring financial assistance from the Nature Works Program. Resolution number 3731 for first reading. Resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C., Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contract grant for the fiscal year 2020, Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and 5339 and/or 5311 funding for capital and/or operating assistance, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval.
See how, see how she did that, John?
She inflects, I'm sorry you didn't realize.
Resolution number 3732 for first reading. Resolution honoring Daniel Gordon, member of the council of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I'd like to suspend the rules and give resolution 3732 at second and third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Allenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes. Motion passes, the rules are suspended for resolution 3732.
Resolution number 3732 for second and third reading. Resolution honoring Daniel Gordon, member of the council of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio.
I'd like to move that we adopt resolution 3732.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Allenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Motion passes, resolution 3732 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8775 for first reading. Ordinance levying a $5 motor vehicle license tax as authorized by Ohio Revised Code. Ordinance number 8776 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts to replace the ATAD tank covers at the water pollution control facility. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 8771 for second reading. Ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, for property generally known as 525 Ridge Street, from B1 Limited Commercial to R5 University-related residential zoning. Ordinance number 8773 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for architectural and engineering services related to a city administrative services building feasibility study. Ordinance number 8774 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in the inter-local purchasing system for roof replacement at the water and sewer facility. Legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 8769 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 151.45D of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding streets and sidewalks.
Mr. President. Mr. Robinette.
I move to adopt ordinance 876.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Allenbaugh?
Yes.
Motion passes, ordinance 8769 is adopted. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any other business to come before council? None, is there a motion for adjournment?
So, move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.